Here we go.
Good evening, everyone. I call the Marlington Local School District Board of Education Special Meeting to order on Thursday, June 17, 2021 at six o'clock PM. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Dr. May, would you please call the role?
Mrs. Gabriel?
Here.
Mr. Hagan?
Here.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion for the Marlington Local Board of Education to adopt the following agenda for the June 17, 2021 special meeting?
So I'm moved.
Are there any additions or corrections?
Can we have a procedural clarification of what's going to happen? As we do this? We move into executive session. Will we coming out of executive session into something?
Yes, we'll come out of executive session. And if a decision's made after, after we come back from executive session, there may be action taken after executive session and then we'll adjourn the meeting and then we'll go into the regular meeting. Is that your question?
Kind of, but what if a decision isn't made?
There is.
Procedure.
Okay, so there's a second executive session listed on the regular meeting and discussion will continue in that executive session.
Okay.
Okay. Patty, please call the role.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Approved, four zero.
Executive session. Is there a motion for the Marlington Local School District Board of Education to recess into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised Code 121.22G1 and House Bill 197 via secure virtual conference line for purposes of considering appointment of a public official. All matters discussed in this executive session are designated to the public officials and employees as confidential pursuant to revised Code 102.03B because of the status of the proceedings and/or circumstances under which the information will be received and preserving its confidentiality is necessary to the proper conduct of government business. Action may be taken after executive session. Is there a motion? Is there any discussion? Dr. May, please call the role.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Approved, four zero.
Everyone could please close out of their public session and enter the secure virtual conference line. Thank you.
Okay, everybody came back muted there.
The board was declared out of executive session at 6:52 PM. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the rule.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Prove for zero.
Thank you very much. The regular meeting is start then at seven o'clock. Good evening, everyone. I call the Marlington Local School District Board of Education regular meeting to order on Thursday, June 17, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance-
I pledge allegiance to the flag- of the United States of America- and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The reading of the mission statement is by Mrs. Karen Humphries.
In collaboration with staff, community, parents, and students, the Marlington Local School District will develop lifelong learners who understand and apply knowledge, and demonstrate excellence in pursuing the highest standards with effective intervention to challenge every student.
Thank you. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Dr. Main, would you please call the rule?
Mrs. Gabriel?
Here.
Mr. Hagan?
Here.
Mrs. Humphries?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion for the Marlington Local Board of Education to adopt the following agenda for the June 17, 2021 regular meeting?
So I moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any additions or corrections?
Do we need to modify the executive session?
For...
Well... I would like to discuss why we need to discuss specialized details of security arrangements for... I'm not sure what that's about.
Well, we wouldn't be able to discuss that in an open session. I believe it's going to be a relatively short discussion.
What are we discussing?
We're not actually able to discuss that in an open session, Dr. Mason.
If this- I mean, it is not something we need to discuss in executive session, period. It's- it's- It's not.
Is it accurate to say that what, Scott, what you're talking about is, you know, this- there is a narrative that it feels like is being, continuing to be propagated here that isn't accurate. And so, it's frustrating to see that on there because it's not been, you know, it sounds- it sounds so ominous. And so, I'm in agreement with that. I don't see that that needs to be on there. I don't see that that needs to be a reason that we're in executive session.
I appreciate your comments. Dr. Main, please call the rule.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
What are we voting on?
What are we voting on? Agenda?
The approval of the agenda?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
No.
Approved three to one.
Public participation. Dr. Maine, were any documents received for the public participation of tonight's meeting?
No documents were received.
Thank you. New business. Dr. Schuffler?
Okay, good evening, everybody. I have some new business items for you, and I believe one through five are going to require a vote. So just if it's okay with you, we'll just vote on each one. We have one more exchange student for next year. We're really glad that we'll be able to take exchange students again. So I'm recommending that we approve Miguel Ponton from Spain as our, one of our exchange students.
So a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the acceptance of Miguel Ponton from Spain as exchange student for 2021-22 school year.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Approved four to zero.
Okay, we have three out-of-state field trips. It's great to bring back the eighth-grade trip to Washington DC. What a great tradition. FFA to their conference in Indianapolis, and then CHEER will get to take their trip to their competition in Orlando.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the field trips for the 2021-22 school year as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
You're muted, Patty.
I can hear.
No, she's on.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Approved four to zero.
Next item I have is supplemental staff, and you have a list there. It's mostly spring coaches for next school year.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the following additional 2021 supplemental positions listed or as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? I just want to say a special thank you to Dr. Mike and his assistants for adding the additional information on the personnel on the agenda. It's, it's helpful for the board to know what we're voting on, and it's, it, I think, makes it more transparent. We've done it in the past, and I greatly appreciate your efforts in doing that, as I know it, it was, took you some time to put that together.
No problem. You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Approved four to zero.
Okay, next thing I have, three hand, the three handbooks that you approve. The Athletic Handbook, the Digital Academy Handbook, and it looks like they left the word draft in there, but the Student Handbook. There were really no changes to those. I think we may have cleaned up like maybe a couple of typos, but they're your general handbooks that you've been using.
So a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the Student Handbook, the Athletic Handbook, and the Duke's Digital Handbook for 2021-22.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Approved four to zero.
Remote door access, as you know, thank you to our townships. They helped us with some COVID money to get touchless entry to our high school and middle school, and we are doing remote door access to our elementary schools. It was my understanding that this was included in the lease purchase, but the short version is it is not. So each building has some cost depending on how new the doors are and how many doors are needed. We did cut back on a couple of doors that we felt we did not need, but those contracts by, your policy have to be approved by the board for those amounts.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the purchase and installation of remote door access points as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second? A second. I do have questions.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, do we, I mean, what that cost that's listed for each one is that, so we, do we know how much that is going to, like, not be paid from the funds we received from the townships?
No, so none of that, none of that would be paid from the townships. We were originally, a portion of that was going to be paid by us and a portion by the lease purchase project. But there are two things involved. The door has to be ready, we, I'm calling it retrofitted, to accept the electronic, and then it has to be wired. So we have to make sure that in our case, the doors are ma, the new doors have to be manufactured so as that they will accept the, that strike, and we're not getting all new doors, so some of them need that strike. So I guess that's the easiest way. So these costs will have to come from us, from probably permanent improvement. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And these are for added security?
Yeah, we, I, it really is a security thing. We, the, the electronic access is so much better, and we know then, we know everybody that went in, who went in, what time they went in. It's well worth it regardless of how we pay for it.
What is the total cost of, of this motion, of what we'll be doing with this motion?
We'd have to, let's see here. Let me just quickly.
Were those, were those the additional doors, or is this a different thing?
No, these, these are, these are just for the electronic wiring piece. Ben's on here, is that correct, Ben? This is to pay for the doors.
Correct. This, this is for the security panels, all of the wiring from the panels to the doors, the card readers, all of those parts separate from the physical doors.
So I think, Ben, we said it's roughly, if you add all three together, let's see, that one, I'm just quickly adding all, we have to add all three together here.
I have a total here, Dr. Mike, of ninety-two, three eighty-five.
You were quicker than me. I was pulling each one up, so Ben's got, that, that would be the total amount.
And you said probably it will come from permanent improvement. That's what you're thinking the money will be used?
Yes, we are thinking that will come from permanent improvement, and the other, I'm not worried about the rest that needs to be, the doors. I'm hoping we'll be ahead of the game with funding for the construction project and then be able to compensate. That's my hope.
For the rest of this project?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Approved four to zero.
Seeing there's no old business, oh, I skipped the bullying report. Twice a year, we are required to report to the board and to the public and then post. We had one reported high school in the second semester, one reported incident of bullying, and the other buildings did not report any. That doesn't require any vote.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there, Dr. Schuffler, do you have any old business?
No, no old business tonight.
Treasurers' agenda, Dr. Maine?
Thank you. First item on the Treasurer's Agenda is to approve the minutes of, for the May twentieth meeting.
Is there a motion for the Marlington Local Board of Education to approve the minutes of the meeting for May twentieth, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Actually, wait a minute, I have one. I was late, but I marked absent.
Right, I think you were not here for the roll call, and if you look after that, it said you entered the meeting.
But under Financial Report.
And then...
I'm sorry, under Financial Reports number four, he's listed as absent.
It has that you entered the meeting, you're absent, and then you entered the meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Approved four to zero. The next item on the agenda are the financial reports for May. The first report that you see attached is a FENSOM. And if you look at the budgets or the unencumbered fund balances at the end, the last column, you'll see that our food service is in pretty good shape now. So I'm really thankful that, that everybody worked together and made that happen. If you look at Fund, see, Fund 430, I want to call your attention to Fund 430. It's the second from the bottom. We'll talk about this during transfers. And also, if you look at the last page, there are some that are federal funds. If you look at 507, Fund 507 is the fourth one down, you'll see that this is our ESER funds, and we'll discuss a little bit about that during our transfer discussion of funds. The next one is a check pay. There are really no out-of-the-ordinary checks this month unless you had questions about that. And the very last one is just our balance sheet showing you that we are in balance. Any questions for me?
Let's get a motion on the table. Is, is there a motion to approve the Treasurer's recommendation for the financial reports and overview of receipts and expenditures for the period ending May thirtieth, 2021?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
I do want to say that I see that McGowan and Markling was paid. I'm asked by that, by members of the community, so it was seventeen thousand, seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents on this one. I'm understanding an additional bill came for, that was from, okay, October through, October 2020 to April 2021, I understand, is that seventeen thousand, seven fifty-eight, and then another bill for May.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. And the one for May was somewhere around five thousand?
I don't have that in my, in my tips. I apologize for that.
That's okay. That's all right. I, I think that's right. It's, I'm sorry, it was three thousand, four hundred fifty-three dollars. So from October to May, it was twenty-one thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars. Okay.
Patty, do we have the right ending date for your report? We've got May thirtieth, 2021. Are you okay with that, or should we correct that to May thirty-first?
Yes, please.
May thirty-first, okay. Is there, is there a motion to correct the date to May, amend the motion to correct the date to May thirty-first, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
And is there any discussion on the amendment? Please call the roll on the amendment to the motion to change the date to May thirty-first.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yeah.
Miss, Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Approved four to zero.
Then the motion on the floor is the motion to approve the financial reports with the corrected date, May thirty-first, 2021. Is there any further discussion on that motion? I just wanted to ask, are we still on task to finish the year with a balanced budget?
Correct.
Thank you. That's very good news. We appreciate all your efforts with all of that, and we're very grateful for the extra funds that came in to help that process.
Yeah.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Abstained.
Approved three to one abstained. The next item on the agenda is for donations for thirty-five dollars from Carolyn Gabriel for the Academic Recognition Committee, and for William Lieber and Mary Lieber, six hundred and one dollars and ten cents for the Marlington John R. Lieber Scholarship.
Is there a motion to approve the donations for May 2021 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yeah.
And Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Approved four to zero. The next one, next item is a transfer. Actually, there are two fund-to-fund transfers. One is for a transfer from General Fund to the Capital Project from NEXIS tax receipts, and also from Fund 430 to Fund 001, General Fund, in the amount of three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Is there a motion to approve the Treasurer's recommendation for the two inter-fund transfers as presented?
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Dr. Maine, could you go over the transfers, please?
Yes. The first one is a transfer for our capital projects, 070, from the NEXIS taxes, and if you look at the attached sheet, it shows that we had receipts of eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-three cents. But as I said before, if you look at the federal fund portion, it is a, a, we spend the funds and then we get reimbursed. So we will have four, five hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars going into that fund from, from our previous purchase of air quality upgrades.
And is that, is that money in the account now, that's ESER fund money that's going directly into the 070 account, correct? Is?
Correct.
And has that occurred, or when will that occur?
That has not been receiveded in. That's why we're asking for a transfer of $317,211.93 so that we will equal out in the balance of those NEXIS pipeline receipts.
And when do you anticipate that would be receiveded in? From ESER?
July. I'm expecting July.
July. Thank you.
Oh, the second transfer is 430, Fund 430, which is a motorcycle safety grant. It's hanging out there, and we're asking just to transfer that back to 001. Just a little thing up there. And I quoted that out on our balance sheet, our FENSOM, that was attached to financials in May.
So just to go back to the, the NEXIS fund transfer, the 070 Capital Project, once the ESER money's in there, we'll have the full amount of the NEXIS payment?
Correct.
And you're transferring this out just before the end of the year so that you balance out?
Correct. Correct. So we will end up with $853,892.93 when it's all finished. It's just a reimbursement sheet.
Okay. And then just in line with the NEXIS funds and the lease purchase, the interest payment has been made at this point, the first interest payment was made?
Correct.
And then would it be possible to have board discussion in July on, in regard to paying additional principal on this, as the board had discussed in the past, if we could put that on, on the agenda for discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gaberick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Approved four zero. The last item on the treasurer's agenda are the attached statement of purposes. We do this every year. You probably recognize these. These are our student activity forms, and these are just our expected expenditures and our expected revenues, which are, come from fundraisers and donations.
Is there a motion to approve the treasurer's recommendation for the Activity Purpose Clause and Budget Statements for the 2021-22 school year as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Do we have these all received in now, Dr. Maine?
No, this is just our expected amounts that we'll receive and our expected amounts that we will expend based on, you know, the information we've gathered from voting level and and fund activity advisors.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Karen made the motion, Josh second.
I apologize. Mrs. Gaberick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Approved four zero.
Dr. Schuffler?
Okay, I'm back with personnel, and I think we need a vote for each one of these. So the first one, you have presented there certified staff resignations, and at Marlington administrators' contracts end on July 31st, and teachers on August 31st.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the following resignations as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Again, Dr. Schuffler, I do appreciate the additional information on the agenda with the addition of the dates. It's helpful.
Okay.
Dr. Maine, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gaberick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Approved four zero.
Okay, certified staff hires. I'm presenting to you Rahema Oyster, high school Spanish, and you have her information there about steps. And then Mrs. Oyster is coming to us from the parochial school world, and Davana Prinkle has been a tutor for us, and she is filling the high school intervention specialist position.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the hires as presented?
So moved.
So, second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gaberick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Approved four zero.
Okay, classified staff retirement and resignations. I know you approved Teresa Rohr's retirement. She did get some further information from our retirement system, SERS, and she is asking to move her retirement date to July 9th. And Rhonda Rutrick, high school secretary, is resigning, and Samir Salvino, she was the tech person at Marlboro, is resigning. So those are retirement amendment and resignations.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the retirement and two resignations as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gaberick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Approved four zero.
Classified staff hires. Susan Cathy is the person we chose to take over as the head cook at Lexington, and some of you may know Susan's been with the district and has been for years at Lexington as a cook. So we're happy that she is stepping into that leadership role. And then we have one person, Barbara Ruth, to add to our classified substitute lists.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the classified hires as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gaberick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Approved four zero.
And administrative hires, as you know, what shook out in our process was high school assistant principal, and I'm recommending to you Greg Travels. Greg is a Stark County guy. He graduated from Canton, local Canton South High School, and had a couple teaching assignments in Stark, but most recently, he's been a couple of years high school assistant principal and athletic director at Crestline. So Greg is coming back home to Stark County, high school assistant.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to hire Greg Travis for, as a high school assistant principal, starting August 1st, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gaberick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Approved four zero.
And my last personnel item for you. I have there a list. This, this will maybe be the final for summer, but we had to add some summer folks. As you know, we have a lot going on this summer, some usual, some with ESER funds, and we're finding we need people to cover vacations and things of that nature. So these folks are all on a time sheet. There's no steps. They just work, fill out the time sheet, and depending on what they do, there's a rate for that. So there is your list there.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to hire the following summer staff as presented?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gaberick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Approved four zero.
Executive session, is there a motion for the Marlington Local School District Board of Education to recess into consecutive executive sessions in accordance with the revised Code 121.22G and House Bill 197 via a secure virtual conference line for the purposes of discussing specialized detail of security arrangements where the disclosure of information to be discussed in executive session might reveal information that could reasonably be expected to jeopardize the security of the public body or public office, discussing employment and/or discipline of a public employee, and three, considering appointment of a public official. All matters discussed in these executive sessions are designed to the public officials and employees as confidential pursuant to revised Code 102.03B because of the status of the proceedings and/or the circumstances under which the information will be received and preserving its confidentiality as necessary to the proper conduct of government business. Action may be taken following the executive session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I second the motion. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gaberick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
No.
Dr. Mason?
No.
Dr. Schuffler, correct me, but
No.
Two, four?
You need three yeses to carry the vote.
Not approved.
Okay.
All right, um, the next, well, before we discuss the next meeting, let's discuss, we need a Wednesday, June 30th, meeting to approve the year-end finances for the treasurer. Dr. Maine said it should not be a long meeting with anyone's availability on the 30th.
Evening, evening.
Evening, evening.
Will it be virtual or in person?
It will be virtual.
Okay, I can do that then.
Patty, what time are you thinking?
It's up to you guys. I just threw out six o'clock.
Six o'clock?
Is six o'clock okay with everyone?
That works for me. Okay, so that's six o'clock on the 30th, and since we have now canceled the ability to talk about to have another meeting to discuss the appointment of a public official, we will need to set special meetings to, to further that discussion. So we only have, we have to have the person seated by the 26th of June, and we're going to have to work very diligently to get that happen. So I think we should set up several meetings, and then as soon as we can choose somebody, we'll stop having the meeting. So what, when can everyone meet on Monday?
I'll schedule around it, so whatever works for everybody else.
Okay, Dr. Mason, what's your availability on Monday?
I'm good, whatever.
Okay, Karen?
It has to be late afternoon at least, or at the earliest.
Four o'clock? Or do you want a little bit later than that?
It could be four, anytime after four.
So does everybody want it at four, or do you want it at five?
Just so you know, for me, I have a dentist appointment at four. I don't know if you need me or want me, but
We do need you to.
Dudes are hard to get, so.
Are you getting a filling done, though?
Nah. So I, just to
You can do that virtual, can't you?
You don't want to watch me get my teeth cleaned. I hate that. So probably five for me, maybe a little 5:15.
5:15?
Is that going to be pushing it?
No, no, I have a Marlington grad that cleans my teeth, so he's good and efficient.
So Monday at 5:15, um, and would virtual is okay with everyone? Yes. And then Tuesday? Karen, I think it's your schedule will work around, I think.
Right. Well, Tuesday, I'm I'm open except for around noon to
Noon to two? Did we want to do four o'clock? Are we good with four o'clock, Dr. Mason?
It's fine.
Wednesday?
Just need to be at least four again for me.
Four o'clock is good, or later?
That'd be fine.
And then we're going to just go with Thursday as well, Thursday at four as well?
Right.
Okay. If we need another one, we'll have to schedule it in there. We do have to do our due diligence to get someone seated. So, Dr. Maine, if you could announce special meetings for Monday, 5:15 virtual, Tuesday, four o'clock, a virtual meeting, and Wednesday, Wednesday and Thursday, four o'clock, all virtual for the purpose of considering appointment of a public official?
Okay, got it.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And the regular meeting, July 15th, 2021, at seven o'clock PM, Marlington High School GLZ, and that will be in-person meeting, is that correct, Dr. Mike?
Correct, yeah.
You have that set up for that?
Yep, the GLZ will be ready.
And just a question, can we continue the ability to have the meeting livestreamed for the public, for those who want to livestream it?
Ben, do you want to weigh in on that? I believe so.
Yeah, absolutely. We can, we can continue to livestream as well.
Okay. And will board members have the option to attend in person versus virtual, or must it be in person?
No, in Ohio, you have to be in person.
I believe they can attend virtually, but they can't vote by telephone or virtually. By telephone or virtual, they can't vote.
Correct.
And the House bill that was going to extend the virtual meetings to December, I don't believe has yet passed. Is that correct?
Right, as far as I know, it has not.
Did they remove that piece?
I think that was removed.
Yeah, I'd have, I'd have to ask legal counsel. I don't, I think it was removed.
You think that piece was removed? Okay. So board members must attend to be able to vote, is that? So to be in person at the Marlington High School DLC?
Correct.
Are there any questions or clarifications on the board meetings? We must adjourn.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the rule.
Mrs. Gaber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Approved four zero.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.